Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting of October 9th, 2018. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Vigil.
Here.
Councilmember Gatchel.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Leader.
Here.
Councilmember Resnick.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Coram President.
Thank you. Changes to the -- any changes, City Manager?
No, I have one.
Okay. Up here. I do know that we have a guest this evening. Mr. Runsted is here, and I've asked him to come up, so I think we just start the meeting with Mr. Runsted to introduce himself and let us know what he's running for.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you. It's a real honor. I normally am dressed in my suit and tie for these kinds of meetings, but I've been out meeting the residences and talking to as many people as I can, so that's why I'm dressed this way. But I just want to let you know I'm currently a state representative, running for the Senate seat. It's an open Senate seat for this November the 6th, for the 15th Senate District, and I want to let you know I'll be completely at your disposal if you have questions. If any residents from Wixom have any questions, runwithrunsted.com is where they can give all my contact information, send me emails, or give me a call. Be as responsive as I possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runsted.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you like, but don't feel like you have to.
Yeah, I'm very glad to. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for coming. We also have a presentation this morning -- or this evening, rather. It's a proclamation for the Turkish American Cultural Association of Michigan in honor of Turkish Republic Day. We have a proclamation that I will -- first of all, I'd like to ask the guests up to the podium. Would you like to introduce yourselves, and then we'll present this?
My name is Gokhan, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for having us here today, and thank you for honoring our proclamation tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Nülfar Esan Bilgin. I'm the current president of Turkish American Cultural Association of Michigan in Wixom. Since last three years, I'm serving as a president, and Gokhan is the vice president, and thank you for inviting us and giving this opportunity, having this proclamation.
Sure. Let me read the proclamation, and thank you, Mayor. Sure. I'll just step up here, so you can get your picture. Okay. It's proclamation. Whereas October 29th, 1923, is the date of the founding of the Republic of Turkey by Mustafa Kemal Atatürk, and whereas Turkey is the only secular democracy in the Muslim world and has made significant contributions to United States foreign policy in the Balkans, the Middle East, Central Asia, and the Caucasus, and has played a critical role in international efforts for peace, prosperity, and stability, and whereas Turkey has become an integral part of Europe through its membership in NATO, the Council of Europe, and its impending membership in the European Union, and whereas Turkey was one of the first allies to show unconditional solidarity with our nation in the war against terrorism, and has thrice commanded the international peacekeeping forces in Afghanistan, and whereas Americans of Turkish descent in the state of Michigan have played a significant role in the education, educational, cultural, economic, and civic development of our community through sharing their rich cultural heritage and through their dedication to the responsibilities of good citizenship. Whereas all Turks and Turkish Americans will be celebrating Turkish Republic Day on October 29th, 2018. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Wixom hereby proclaim that October 29th, 2018 shall be known and celebrated as Turkish Republic Day in the city of Wixom, and encourage all Wixom citizens to join in recognizing the important day. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. You two can stay for the entire meeting if you'd like, but.
Let's see.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled council meeting of September 25th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support? Any comments, changes, additions, deletions? Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is correspondence. There was none. It reminds me, I -- there was a communication, I thought.
Yeah, it's my oversight.
Yeah.
That's something we should include on there.
We're talking about a communication that was --
Hamburg Township.
Came from Hamburg Township, directed to the council. Did anybody see that? Okay. Yeah, I was -- if everybody saw, I -- my suggestion to the city manager was to write a response for us.
Yes.
And to respond, and then I think that that would be the appropriate thing to do. And then, of course, we'll review it before it goes out, but I think that's the appropriate thing to do.
Right.
All right.
I will do so.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the first call to the public, and I'll read the rules for public speaking. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by majority vote of council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing council, and all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Would anybody like to address the council this evening on any agenda items? Seeing no one, I'll close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda are the city manager's reports. The first report is the fire monthly report of August 2018. Any -- do you have anything they want to address? The second is the police monthly report of August 2018. No questions tonight. Takes us to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council -- by council member's sole request, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion and support. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There is no unfinished business. New business. First item under new business is a recommendation to accept the low qualified bid from Holiday Designs, Inc. of Gainesville, Georgia, for holiday decorations in the amount of $26,002.50, and approve a budget amendment to the Parks and Recreation Capital Plan for $26,003.
So moved. Support.
What happened to that 50 cents? All right. Discussion. Anybody? Mr. Resnick.
Just a question. In the past, did our CPW actually do any of this work with -- this is -- I'm taking decorating the poles and the trees and putting all the lights up? Is that correct?
Yes, they did. Every year.
So this is the first year we'll be contracting it?
Well, we won't be contracting it. We'll be purchasing a lot.
Okay, so this is not any labor, then? It's just the purchase of?
It's just the purchase of the items.
All right. Yeah, they're still going to put up the decorations and the?
Yes, yes. That's all planned with all the other events that we outlined before for the night of the tree lighting. This is just the purchase. We bid the project for the tree, the ornaments, and the bows.
Anybody else? Mr. Smiley.
Thanks. Hi, Dan. The -- this is mostly just clarification items. The tree, how much is just the tree? And just so you know where I'm going with this, I'm just curious, though, because the tree is going to be long-term, will be able to use it years going forward?
Correct.
I'm just wondering what kind of savings we're looking at, you know, for roughly how long this tree might last.
Out of this $26,000, the actual tree was approximately $18,000.
Oh, that's what that was. Okay.
With the idea that we could expand with the four feet increments if we want to make it larger in the future.
Oh, we could purchase add-ons?
Correct. Four feet.
Okay. Doesn't come with add-ons. I got you. So if we keep the tree as-is, we're going to spend $8,000 roughly, just roughly, each year to -- no?
No, that's included. All the bows are basically -- they're commercial bows, which are designed for -- to be weather-resistant, fade-resistant.
Oh, all of it is long-lasting?
Correct.
Okay. Any -- do they give you any idea, you know, how long typically these things last, or?
Well, it depends, of course, on the weather, but the tree is a 10-year warranty, and it's LED lights, and the bows usually last for 10 years at least. So, for a while.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. You want to make any other comments about this?
No, I'm good.
All right. We have a recommendation. We have a motion to accept the low qualified bid from Holiday Designs, Inc. of Gainesville, Georgia, for holiday decorations in the amount of $26,0250, and approve the budget amendment to the Parks and Recreation Capital Plan for $26,003. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dan. Next on the agenda is a recommendation to accept a proposal for construction services for the roof replacement of City Hall and the community center by William Mulner Roofing, Inc. of Riverview, Michigan, for a total not to exceed $368,585. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Yes, Mr. Vigil.
Thanks. Because I know we touched -- talked about this briefly earlier, but when I was here, when they were walking around, looking at the roofs and stuff like that, and there were a number of contractors, is there a reason why we only had one bid?
We had 10 contractors that signed up for the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and, you know, once they've gone through the entire process, yeah, we only received one bid. One reason was, you know, when calling those contractors back was they were too busy to do this work, or they felt that this was, you know, going to be difficult at this time of the season, and those kind of things. There was a little bit of trepidation, if you will, for the lightning suppression system that we have and the different pieces of the thing. And when researching the contractor, Mulner, we found that they were capable, they came back with good reports, so we -- it's within our budgets. We feel that this one bid is -- will work for us.
Yeah, like I said, I was just surprised when I saw, you know, a number of people walking around that day, and then when we get one bid, I'm just probably by surprise. Thanks.
And same with us.
Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, did we get anything from -- did we get -- call Spencer Roofing? I mean, they do these big kind of?
We called several of them, and?
No, Spencer, which is in our city. I mean, they got a building, right? They have an office right over there on Back Road. Did we get hold of them?
We did not. We had -- yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Smiley.
Hi, Jim. In the -- it mentioned, you know, that we're kind of starting this late in the year. There was a little worry about getting it done.
Yep.
If the weather's severe. Just kind of what's our worst-case scenario? If the weather is kind of nasty, does some of this get bumped into the spring?
So we would bump portions of it into the spring, depending on the need, but each area will be done to completion, so we won't have any leaks.
Yeah, yeah. Glad to see that.
Yeah.
But I mean, what might it look, just like two different roofs up there?
Well?
It might be a little eyesore at worst.
Yeah, it's not -- you won't see it because it's the flat portion of the roof. The metal portion that you see from the road, if you will, will remain, actually. That's a 40-year system.
Or no, there's no worry of any damage being caused by having half of it done or a portion of it done?
No.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Just building on Councilman Smiley's question, about five years ago, I did one of my commercial buildings in November, and the contractor had taken the old membrane off.
Yep.
And he replaced the insulation panels.
Yep.
And what happened was it got dark, and he only had some of the membrane down, and he wasn't able to seal any of the overlaps or anything yet, and we had a five-inch wet, heavy snowfall that night. So the exposed U-channel decking filled up with the snow.
Yep.
Next morning, they came in, and they put the rest of the membrane on, and it got to about 55 degrees outside with a sunny day. Needless to say, all of my ceiling tiles got soaked, a lot of equipment damaged on desks and everything else, so I think we need to be very careful about that time of year if there is a wet, heavy snow.
Yes.
In between periods where there's exposed decking, so.
Yep. We will have it being inspected, you know, throughout the period, so.
Right.
Yeah. We will monitor it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Gatchel.
Thank you. Given that we're kind of hearing, aside from the scope of the work, just this seasonality and mother companies felt they could squeeze it in, do we have a ton of roof leaks where this needs to get done right now, or do we think we'd be able to get better pricing and more bids in the spring?
We do not anticipate better pricing in the spring.
Okay.
And we do have significant amount of leaks each year. We can continue, you know, to repair them as they go, but, you know, this is -- we've got it in the budget, and we'd like to get it completed as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Are there any leaks right now?
Current -- no, we've repaired the greatest ones this summer again. Yes. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay. We've got a motion and a second to accept the proposal for construction services for the roof replacement of City Hall and the community center by William Mulner Roofing, Inc. of Riverview, Michigan, for a total not to exceed $368,585. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new business number three, which is a request for authorization to participate in the State of Michigan Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of one BOSS salt spreader from Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc. of Howell, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $5,269. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. You want to comment on this? Tim?
This is a salt spreader that will go on the new purchased pickup trucks that we're getting. We do have one Monroe spreader right now, and we'd like to, you know, put that one on one of the new trucks, and then this new piece of machinery on the second one. And it's stainless steel and construction. We feel it's a good pricing, and we've looked at other models, and we'd like to try the BOSS out. It's what we'd like to purchase.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Smiley.
Did you say we have one already that's new?
No, we have an old.
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying it's a one's coming up.
One's years old.
Will be transferred to the new truck, and then?
Right.
The second one, right here, will be on the other truck.
Correct.
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Vigil. Do you see the one that we're keeping is 12 years old?
I believe that's the age.
What's the use on those? How many more years do you think we're going to?
So, yeah, that's the other piece of it. We want to keep our redundancy. I'm not -- I -- it depends on the mechanical each year. You know, and once we fire them up, we can not get that. So we want to make sure we have at least one operator -- operational for the year on this one.
All right.
I just -- yeah, we don't feel that we need two, if that's your question.
Okay, very good. That's a?
Yes.
My next question is maybe me too. Thanks.
Yes.
Mr. Resnick.
Just since this is the first time we're using the BOSS brand of it, right? And it's a different construction material and everything?
Right.
Anybody else use it near us? Bobai or Farmington Hills? Anybody?
It -- there -- I spoke with the Truck and Trailer Rapp, and there's -- there are a few communities. I didn't get the names of the communities. I'm sorry. But, yeah, they felt that it was a good model, and we also looked at the Nap Hyde model through Monroe, and the new ones, we just felt that this one was, you know, a better piece of machinery.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion and a second to authorize participation in the State of Michigan Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of one BOSS salt spreader from Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc. of Howell, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $5,269? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next item on the agenda is second call to the public. I'll open that up. Anybody who wanted to come up and make a statement regarding anything that might be on their mind? Please feel free to do it. Seeing no one rush to the fore, I will close the second call to the public. Again, noting that I think that televising these things causes people not to show up at meetings, but that's my opinion. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's comments. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. I'll highlight in the existing report that I was providing to you. I'll highlight one item. The city clerk's office had 1,200 absentee ballots mailed out to Wixom voters this past week. The clerk came to me today to talk about the fact they expect it to be a very busy election cycle, rivaling a presidential election, in fact, is what seems to be predicted by a lot of people watching this, and seemingly in line with the experience of the clerk's office so far. We're probably going to have some added costs in relation to that that will be hitting our budget with additional time required, as the clerk's office is being inundated with people coming in for registrations to vote, requests for absentee ballots, and other things associated with that, along with the daily workload of passports and everything else that the clerk's office does. So that's something that we'll keep our eye on, and we expect to have a very busy season for Kathy Buck and for Crystal Opalco in the clerk's office. So we're going to keep our eye on that, but we do expect it to be very busy. The second thing that I want to make mention of that is not reflected on the city manager's update writing, is it was my privilege and honor to participate in a military academy nomination screening process for U.S. Representative David Trott. Our own councilman, Kennedy, asked me to participate with that. That took place this past Saturday. We hosted it at the community center, and it was really a great experience for me personally to see so many really outstanding examples of the youth today that came to us for requests of a nomination to the various military academies. I participated on a panel of three for the Air Force Academy, and was there for about five to six hours on that Saturday. We had, I believe, 12 applicants that were there, one backed out for a scholarship offer. So we had 12 applicants that we actually screened for the Air Force Academy, and really enjoyed the process. There were some really excellent people that we talked with, either by Skype with the new technology available today, for people that were not in the area and/or in person with people that showed up to be part of the process at the Wixom Community Center. So it was just my privilege to be a part of that. Really enjoyed it. Have some experience with that back in the day. I pursued an Air Force Academy nomination when I was a high school student, and did in fact get one, but decided not to pursue it. So it was great to be a part of that. So I wanted to thank U.S. Representative Trott for the opportunity to participate and assist with that process, and I think everybody on my panel was of the same mind. It was a great experience, and a lot of interesting information, and a lot of outstanding young people to talk with. So just wanted to mention that. Hopefully I get asked back in the future. We'll see. That's all that I had for my city manager update for the night.
I don't put you on the spot, but I was wondering if you could just touch very briefly on the meeting that we all attended, or some of us attended, at Milford the other day on the PFOS issue.
Yeah, so the PFOS, I could cover that as well. The PFOS meeting that was held by the village of Milford took place this past week on the 4th. We probably had -- I didn't get an exact count, but based on what I understood, the capacity of the room to be, I would say we were in the neighborhood of maybe between 115 and 125, maybe people that were present. The Michigan Department of Environmental Quality participated. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services participated. The Huron River Watershed Council participated, as well as the three communities that were joint hosts, that being the city of Wixom, village of Milford, and Milford Township. Was budgeted for two hours. It came in almost exactly at that two-hour mark when all was said and done. I want to compliment people that were on the panel with me for doing a great job of covering information. I think there was a lot of honest and clear information that was provided there for the benefit of people that were concerned about this PFOS contamination that's being experienced in the watershed council, or in the watershed of our area. And city Wixom shared a bunch of information in there, and we can get into some of the details if you'd like, but just in general, the event was well done. There were a lot of questions that were handled at the end. The crowd was excellent as well, and I thought that it was a very good exchange of information between people who had some knowledge and understanding of the situation with residents that were concerned about it. And it was my privilege to be a part of it as representing the city there. We had some information that we provided by way of PowerPoint slides that were part of the formal presentation, as well as discussion as the meeting progressed. And it really was just a textbook example of a well-run public information opportunity there, as far as I'm concerned. I compliment the DQ folks for their role in bringing it together, as well as the other folks from the state, as well as the Huron River Watershed Council. It went very well. And just as a follow-up to that, there was some information that was provided there in terms of how things are being handled for the city of Wixom and the company Adept or TriBar, as they're newly being known as. They were the source of this PFOS and this PFOA, chemical substances that were being discharged through our wastewater treatment plant. There was initially an indication that it was going to take about two months for them to get a filtration system in place, which is obviously an issue when every day that's more of those substances going into the watershed. Instead, they presented information just a day or two before the event that they had managed to come up with a temporary mobile solution that was going to bring most of the benefits and possibly all of the benefits of that permanent solution into play within a matter of days. It was intended to be installed by October 5th. It in fact was installed by October 5th and is in operation at the plant for Adept or TriBar currently. We expect that samples were taken either late in the evening last night or first thing in the morning today by them of their wastewater discharge to our wastewater treatment plant. We will likewise take a sample after about an 18-hour timeframe passes, so that we have the new wastewater discharge in our system. We will do another sample test on our own as well, and we expect to see dramatic increase or drag improvements on what levels of those PFOS and PFOA substances are present in the wastewater from Adept in the first place and from our affluent discharge into the watershed. So we're probably going to get those results within a couple of weeks if it's expedited the way that I think it will be. It's normally a one-month turnaround, so it might be within a couple of weeks we'll have the results, and we're excited to see that coming into play far sooner than originally thought. So that was another positive piece of information we were able to share at that end.
Thank you very much. And I also, I understand that it's on a -- that presentation was recorded and is on our website as well.
Right, the video, the video of the, of the event is available on our website under our PFAS updates on the news section of our website, and we're looking to get ahold of the actual PowerPoint presentation as well. I don't know that we've managed to secure that as of yet, but that is also supposed to be made available. The PowerPoint was covered in the video, but we also want to have it available separately so people can look at it more at their own pace when they have the desire to use it. So we're hoping to have that available within the next 24 hours. But the video's onsite on our website, and on our web, on our YouTube channel, we're also having it there as well. So if you follow us on YouTube, you'll be able to find it there. If you go to our website, you'll be able to find it there as well.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Mr. Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to congratulate our Wickham Ninja Warrior, but you didn't, you didn't read the whole thing, so I'm just going to read it.
Absolutely.
It's pretty short, because this is really cool. Congratulations, Emily Thibodeau, Thibodeau? Anybody know if I'm saying that right? Thibodeau? Okay. Sorry. 14-year-old Wickham freshman at Wald Lake Western, daughter of proud parents Matt and Scott. She was selected last summer to compete the first season of the American Ninja Warrior Junior. And I just think that's really cool. It begins October 13, 7:00 p.m., Channel 21, 28, BBC Comcast. Anyway, I thought that was really cool and worth, worth mentioning. I also wanted to thank Mr. Brown for keeping Wickham well-informed on this PFOS issue, a sensitive subject. I directed a lot of people to the website who have been prompting me for, you know, questions and inquiries, and/or Facebook. So it's very nice to be able to put them, send them there, and everything they want to know is there. Only other thing left is happy birthday to Councilman Kennedy. Thank you.
Birthday boy.
I'm not going to say...
This is my first opportunity.
Oh, God.
I didn't say it, Mr. Smiley. Okay. Mr. Gatchel?
Thank you.
Get to you later.
I'm looking forward to this weekend with the fire station open house and panther hunt. I always like that Saturday, being at both and seeing so many residents, and people start to get ready for fall and Halloween, and all the kids dressing up and passing out cider and donuts, so looking forward to that this weekend.
Thank you.
Mr. Resnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to mention, I was able to attend the Bark in the Park event that Parks and Recreation put on. It was a very refreshingly new event, well-attended considering the weather, it was a little bit cool and dreary out that day, but a lot of fun. And the, you could see that everybody was really engaged with what was going on there, between the different vets and the training schools and the tricks and the talent contest with, I think a beagle won the talent contest? I can't remember, but...
Best behaved, yes.
Best behaved, yeah. So very nice event. I also attended the Huron River Watershed Council meeting, and, you know, you know, Mayor Ziegler, Councilman Beagle, and folks from SWEZ and DPW there as well, and I think that you ought to be very proud of how your city acted, proactively acted on this, and Mr. Brown and his administration, by being proactive, addressing it right away, informing the public all the way, you ought to be very proud, so thank you as well. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
If I can add on to there real quickly, not to the last comment, but the one before that, the Bark in the Park thing. We did have that videotaped by the Wald Lake Schools video team. We had mentioned how we wanted to make sure they stayed involved with us, and that was an example of them coming out to take care of videotaping that. That's on their website, it's going to be on our website, it's going to be on our YouTube channel as well. So Wald Lake and Southern Lakes Schools came out and videotaped that for us as well, so...
Very good.
Yeah, great video.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, birthday boy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What, now, now, can you, can you, before you get started, can you give us an idea of, like, which birthday it would be?
I can collect social security now.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm there.
So, all right, well, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. City Manager Steve Brown. You know, my job that I do on a day-to-day basis, I'm the district representative for United States Congressman Dave Trott. And one of my things I get to do is, we have the Academy Nomination Awards, where we pick the next leaders for our military academies. Mr. Brown, the congressman has already told you thank you, and for spending most of your Saturday away from your family to help go through this process. Your input was invaluable, and he'd like to also thank the City of Wickham for hosting us and letting us do that in the newly renovated community center. It went very smoothly. We even have to thank Joan Rourke, who I was short one person at the last minute, and Joan stood at the door and made sure and pointed out to the families and the applicants where to go and how to, where to be at, and was a great service to the congressman also. Again, thank you to the City of Wickham for hosting that. We have a great group of people. The panelists have ranked them for us, and they have been turned in to the congressman, and we'll be making our nomination commitments to the academies within the next week or so. So again, sir, Mr. Brown, thank you very much. On that note, though, it is the Air Force Academy's loss and the City of Wickham's gain that you did not take your nomination. That I am glad of.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The one thing with regards to the bids, when we're doing roofing and stuff like that, when we have a large company like Spencer Roofing here in our city, if they happen not to see the bid request or know that it's out there, it sure, I think, would behoove us just to give them a quick cough, considering they're just, you know, all their equipment's less than a mile away from us, and maybe we could get some kind of economy of scale with the fact that they're here in our city. But that, you know, like I said, I appreciate that, the fact that you went out, you requested them, and the other people weren't able to do that. But it's something we might consider. The Bark in the Park, congratulations, everybody, on that. And Steve, the city manager Brown, I'd like to thank you for your aggressive handling of keeping everybody informed on the PFOS situation. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leader?
I also look forward to the Panther Hunt event every year. It's been put on great, my kids enjoy it. It's nice to see everybody coming out and dressed up in costumes. Hopefully we'll have some good weather. This year, last year, I remember it not so good. So I have not, I've not looked at the forecast, but hoping it's like today. Also, happy birthday.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Beagle?
I have nothing tonight.
You don't?
I have none.
All right, I guess you don't have to.
In the tradition of Kevin Hank, no, I'm not going to do that. Yeah, happy birthday, and many more, and... Yeah, I, we had a good weekend last weekend with the Bark in the Park. I thought it was, I don't have pets, never had pets, but, you know, it reminds me that, you know, 20 years ago, when I decided to run for council, and I walked through the neighborhoods, went to all the places, I, I noticed that there were a lot of people that had a dog. And, and I noticed, a couple of years ago, when I was walking through the neighborhoods running for reelection or election, I noticed now people have dogs. There's no, people don't have one dog anymore, everybody has dogs. And it was interesting going up there and talking to the people that are, have, have pets. They're really into it, and you can tell just by going to the store and seeing the lines, lanes and lanes of dog and cat paraphernalia that's for sale, and that's just amazing. And so I think really did a good job getting involved in this and taking the initiative and starting this annual event, because it was well-attended, and everybody there was excited to be there. It was really a good event. Looking forward to this weekend. It's going to be a busy weekend, there's a lot of things going on. The, of course, the open house at the fire department, which we always look forward to going to, and the Panther Hunt, of course, but this new thing that they have this, this year, the Historical Society is putting on, it's, it's an event that is at the cemetery, and I think Ron Moore put a picture on, of his costume on Facebook, and it looks pretty, pretty interesting. What are you, the head of the, the chief, or the horse thief posse, or?
The Horse Thief, Anti-Horse Thief Association of Southwest Oakland County.
All right. And the idea is, is that they, different people are stationed at different plots in the cemetery, and they're dressed in garb of the time, and they are giving you, they're pretending they're the person that's buried below, which is pretty cool. It's going to be kind of a neat thing that I'm really glad that you decided to go. But we got to go to all these things, and it's going to take a lot of, a lot of coordinating. And at the last minute, we got an invitation to go to the Nepalese celebration over at the community center, which is disappointing to miss, because last, when they celebrated their New Year's, Ron and I were able to attend that, and it was really a very nice event, and I'm going to miss attending. Too bad it's, so many things are just kind, kind of converging on this weekend. But in any event, it's going to be an exciting weekend and a fun weekend. Having said all that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Support.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go home.